I'll meet in order, sort of the pledge. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to give your oath of which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need for executive session, your motion for approval of the mitts, point one, someone? Second. Any discussion?
Jean?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Need a motion for personnel items for action, point one. Someone?
Second.
Any discussion?
Jean?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora? John?
Aye.
Number five, five point one, finance items for action. Treasurer's report recommended that the Board of Education approve treasurer's report as presented in the motion, someone?
Second.
Jean?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye. You have one question, as far as theory more, she gets a BOSIS employee or is that? So you can do five point two, three, five point seven, approval of the motion?
Someone?
I do a question, is there a question?
No, no, I'll do this.
All right, after?
Yeah, second, second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I do have a question.
Please.
On the cyclical budget transfer, can you just explain that in the guidance, I don't have the wording right in front of me, but went over it quickly, it was just a one line item. Was it four?
That is from guidance, we told the guidance, we had tuition bills for TC three from the end of last year, they need to be paid, and we encumbered enough for this year, and some students that will be attending room for three students for three courses.
Yeah, we have some students in room coming into an early college model this year, so we'll be the first.
Partnership.
They'll actually attend, they'll attend room community college this week.
We encumbered the whole amount.
So that would help shorten anything, as far as?
As far as our unbalances start.
Is that increasing over the years, does that increase the overall students?
This will be the first year of the early college model, and we got three kids signed up. In terms of TC three, those are the courses that the kids primarily are taking with our staff, some will take these in for this course between TC three, but this is the first true early college model classes approved.
Item six.
Jean?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Sorry, one more question.
That's okay.
And John?
Item six, CPSC, CSC five oh four recommendations, recommended recommendations of the CPSC, CSC, and five oh fourteen are hereby approved, any motion?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Jean?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
So president's report, I really didn't have anything until I saw the paper this morning, I just wanted to briefly discuss if anyone's seen that US News report, high school rankings that came out, let's see that, it's in the, I think it's in the press, so anyone who takes a look at that may see that there's a number of different rankings on there, some of which are important to take note of, I think proficiency scores, some in that, I think we were eighth ranked, eighth in the region, and if someone looked at that at first glance, they may think that we're not doing as well maybe as we should, but I also, you know, people care about what they measure, and what they're measuring, although some are things are ignored, there's nothing in there about career readiness, other than career readiness, but career development programs, I think that we offer and kind of, we're heading in that direction, where the rankings are really based on how students are going to college, and I think if you keep up with the trends right now, I think more people, more and more people are going into the trades, certification, BOSIS programs, certification programs, and that's not reflected in the study, and so if you happen to take a glance at it, keep that in mind from what lens we're looking at that through, I'll be curious then if it's calls about it or comments about it, I think it's kind of misrepresenting where we are overall, particularly in the region with preparing students for life and career, so.
And then another important thing to note there is to pay close attention to the formula and what's included, so we, we have a lot of students that we've pushed to take college courses, which obviously there's significant savings for them, might be a district that offers more AP courses, that might be part of a piece of the formula that causes them to leapfrog in some cases, so the formula itself, I think is important, pay close attention to.
Board committee reports, someone have a report?
Of course, I mentioned, Dr. Green mentioned that the last board meeting, EDI, Marcy and Jessica, Matt, what did you name it? Can't remember. And so if you recall, we had NISBA doing a compliance review, and we put together basically this list of things that we have that are okay, things that we may not have, that what they recommend or require, that we put in, policies that we have that they recommend be changed to some degree, and then just recommendations, so we started that process a couple weeks ago, and tonight, we'll see under business, our goal is to put together four policies, I think every time we made, and then our goal is by, I'd say probably within a year and a half, two years, we're going to have a policy, we'll update in electronic format, so that's the goal, and number ten of there primarily are those first few policies that we reviewed.
On September nineteenth, there's a legislative committee at BOSIS at City Hall, and so that'll be our first meeting with the group from this past year, so Joe, if you're available, we got the notice from Mark, and if you can't make it, let me know.
Is that the meeting we have online as well?
No, this is different, this is where we'll all be meeting to go over the NISBA resolutions throughout the October voting, that, and then we also are going to be discussing with candidates in the legislative prep exhibition, I believe is in February, but we'll be preparing for that as well, because we're going to put together, but you're all welcome to come too, I just know that Joe and I are on the committee from the board here.
So we have a couple presentations tonight, as you know, we have a pretty robust summer enrichment program, which went out for several weeks this summer, so I thought it would be nice for, for Carrie and Ryan, who always see the enrichment programs, and talk a little bit about what really went on this summer here in terms of programs and other kids.
Yeah, so just a brief overview, over a few for you, sorry, thanks for having us, another very successful summer, I always like to start off before we get into the actual presentation, we have to thank the people that make this happen, and it is our teaching staff, you'll see in the numbers here, one of them, there's seventy plus staff worked, transportation department, Tony Caranta, Margaret Fane, and Deb Alaker, without them doesn't happen, every Monday is like the first day of school, and different kids coming, and they're setting up different routes, depending on what we're doing, that is not an easy task, and out of my office, Ashley Oliver, amazing, the equipment and the purchasing and the dealing with BOSIS from the back and core, and working with our staff to get all of the stuff that we do to provide for the kids, again, I can't thank her enough for the amount of effort she puts in to make sure that happens, and you know, we've enriched them all year long, but we get into summer, the best couple years Carrie has taken on the summer, so a thank you to her for the technology and the logistics and her, you know, mind to really put this together and organize it, it, it takes a lot for this to happen, but again, thank you to the board for continuing to support it, because it's, it's a great opportunity for kids, so we just have about four slides here, just to give you a brief overview, I guess we only go through the numbers and that, so I'll start through the numbers, our program, again, a little change this year, we used to, you would see like last year, okay, we registered for, and we had a hundred and twenty programs offered elementary level, so what we did this year, we probably still offer very close to that, but from a registration standpoint, we created the Hawks Nest, and it was a summer fun camp program where at the elementary level, all of those kids registered, but you registered for summer fun, whereas before you might have registered for PE camp this week, and then soccer camp this week, and you registered for summer fun, and then Carrie did a fantastic job of organizing each of those weeks with a theme, and all of those different camps were infused throughout each week, so instead of parents registering for multiple registrations, multiple camps, they registered for one, and their kids got the benefit of all of those camps.
Yeah, we took out the parent having to go through the program guide and try to pick, all right, well, they can go here in the morning and here in the afternoon, and make it themselves, and then I took on the task of taking all of the camps and making it a full day program for all the students, so instead of them going to two classes a day, they got to go to five or maybe six different classes a day, depending on what was being offered by our teachers that week.
And I think it's later in here too, we also offered field trips, so that was a great experience for kids who got to go to Greenwood Park and some places, and I heard some feedback that the first week they couldn't have been there before, you know, so they got that opportunity, six through twelve enrichment, again, a lot of camps, something will always continue to go, that was definitely set up more like we have in the past, where they signed up per week, and came to the either AM, PM, or full day camp, but we, again, from a participation standpoint, you can see each week, it was an average of a hundred and sixty-two kids at the Hawks Nest K five, six through twelve averaged a hundred and twenty-eight kids per week, and you can see we had seventy staff members who were involved in top courses in some capacity, some were all summer, some were half days, some were weeks, so it's a nice option, and the length of the camp was five weeks, from eight to three, and lunch and breakfast provided for kids along with transportation.
Brian, how were your numbers in comparison to last year in regards to Richmond for elementary?
Pretty much the same.
Pretty much the same from the numbers I have from last year.
And we looked at that too, because at first we were like, holy smokes, we didn't have, we needed to open it up for more, but when you really started, and again, the technology side of her being able to run some of her reports, she was able to pull that data, and it really ended up being about a hundred and seventy-five, we were nervous we were going to get two hundred and twenty, three hundred kids, and look at the staff to say, oh boy, how are we going to manage that?
I think we had a hundred and eighty-two registered, but they could, didn't have to come all five weeks, they could go, they could tell us what weeks they were coming, what weeks they were not coming, and we managed it from there.
So parents that chose to go on vacation during that five weeks, they could have sent their children, you know, three out of five or four out of five.
Yeah, they had a vacation plan, they just told us like on week four, we're not, my child won't be attending, so we didn't have to accept that that week.
Yeah, within the registration, I was asked what weeks do you plan or not plan to attend?
Well, children turn away, or families turn away because.
Nope.
That was one concern I heard from the.
I had, if I could go to the program, if a program, any programs K through twelve was full, they could join a waitlist, and then once the first, the first registration period had ended, I sent out a private link to anyone who was on the waitlist and asked them to register by a certain date, and of the eighty that sent it to, I think I got thirty-five back, that decided to register, I think other families had pursued other options at that point, that was later, and then later in the year, but no, we didn't turn any of them away.
That helped us a lot, that was only, because I get amazing.
So one of the things you.
But I could hear that, you know, he had like be online at twelve.
So.
Yeah, I figured out how to fix that for next year, we don't have to register.
And then you had to know your bus driver number, or your.
You have to know your student ID number.
If you want, all people who want to transfer school or transportation, you need that.
So maybe that could be included in instructions or something, but they were like, we had wait three times a morning to call to find out then information, but then it was all booked up.
I learned how to fix that.
We will be.
It'll be opening later next summer, at a normal, normal business.
One of the things that came that we noticed, where people maybe heard from the past, why we switched the registration as well, was because it used to be, we said, everyone says it's like signing up for Disney Fastpass, midnight would happen, and by seven in the morning, it was full, and then people were getting blocked out, so the change and some of the things we've done helped eliminate some of that.
And I was up late at night when I opened, just to make sure it was working, because I was like, I can't sleep, I need to make sure this works, so.
So yeah, we're, we're tweaking little things every year to, you know, make some of those things better, so.
So this was kind of the six big areas I've been working on programs for this year, the big one being the elementary, the Hawks Nest, Summer Fun, I've had a committee in the wintertime, and we started planning, and we kind of picked some themes to kind of tie things around, we started off with STEAM weeks, that's always been a popular program in the past, so we started off with that, we had Olympics week, and Friendship Week, and Around the World Week, and then we have a craft time every day, so we tied that into it, and then teachers tried to kind of pick the week based on the theme, we were able to, thanks to the district, take field trips on Wednesdays this year, we went to Greenwood Park and Western and Cop Park, and the kids had a blast, the first week at Greenwood, we were down at the beach, and they were swimming, this is the best day I've ever had in my whole life, like he just said, they were having so much fun, and then on the last day, we did have, it was supposed to be outside, but it forced it was pouring rain, we were supposed to have like a field day at Carnival, we ended up just having, we had Bobby K come, and they had carnival games, and bounce houses, and crafts, and our two DJs came and DJed for the day, and just had a fun day on the last day of camp with everyone, which is great. Another new thing that came through the show was strength and conditioning, and I'll talk a little more about that with the intern program, is Pat and Taylor has gotten some new equipment, and so he had students working, college students working with him, with teams and small groups and training plans, and they could go all five weeks, every afternoon the fitness center was open for that.
Yeah, this is so our PE staff, we did six, six through eight, elementary, and then the Hawks Nest, it was kind of infused throughout, Mr. Wolfberger had, and we also went in the PE, we had sports camps, so some of those sports camps that you see over here, that are sports conditioning, that might have been for your seven, twelve, but then throughout the Hawks Nest, some of our coaching staffs also ran camps for the little ones, so that's all infused into that Hawks Nest, and then these were more sports specific, and the PE was our PE staff running those clinics or things throughout, the pickleball is very popular, we had a morning and afternoon session, and most of them were pretty much full of pickleball, pickleball, and then our music department stepped up as always, they offered four weeks of lessons for K through twelve, for music lessons, whether you could want to learn a new instrument, or get better at your current instrument, Lindsay had a community band where students and alumni could play together, Ryan serviced an intro to DJing again, and had students come, and then he takes them throughout the week, and they practice DJing at different camps around whatever week they're doing it, he also had started OFA Rock, so the kids could come and just kind of jam on Fridays, we had our summer theater workshop this summer, and Color Guard had two weeks of camp again, and I think that was for music, and then of course, infusing STEAM throughout the summer too, and we think the summer was drone soccer, John Heath and Ryan Service did that, and the kids actually got to build the drones, they were going to use for the soccer, and then program them, and they saved kind of a footage, and they played in the air with the drones, but they're playing soccer, we had STEAM week again at the elementary, and then just one other highlight, we had a genetics camp this summer, a lot of things getting kids out into nature and walking around campus too. Very busy.
Very busy. The last big change we had this summer, which I got a lot of positive feedback about, was we had a summer college internship program this summer, so we had the IT department, our Hawks Nest Summer Fund was for elementary education, exercise science, conditioning, our music department, building trades, college students could apply to be an intern with us this summer, and so we interviewed, how many people?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five people, this spring, while they were, you know, getting ready for finals, they took the time to meet with us and interview, and then we kind of decided if they were a good fit for our district, which was where my placement department they would go into, and then they were able to get five weeks of practical work experience in either their major or in avenue they're interested in pursuing, I can speak best to the Hawks Nest because I was in charge of those interns, you know, I had elementary education majors, I had students that wanted to go to pediatric nursing, they wanted to work with children and see how I would go, I had over about twenty-five interns this summer, just at our department alone, that were camp counselors, working with students every day, and you know, they got to plan activities, they were in charge of the kind of field trips, they got to work with classroom teachers and see how classroom teachers ran their camps, it really was a beneficial program, and when I asked them for feedback at the end of the summer, I thought was the, one of the interns said, I really enjoyed this camp, I'm happy, I ended up working here, I would definitely love to come back next summer, it's helped me feel a lot of reassurance about my future career in teaching, and I had a couple of elementary students too ask about wanting to just do teaching with us, because they just really enjoyed being at WE Go, and said they haven't had a summer work experience like they had with us this summer.
Thank Carrie, thank credit to you guys for this deal, making this shift, one of the things that we talked about, recruitment and development of our future staff, and thinking about shortages of teachers in general across the state, and these are, most of them are old, who graduated, you know, from OFA, and were coming back to, you know, they're, depending on what field they're in, many of, most of them were education majors, there's something along those lines, but gives us a chance to see how they do, how they interact with kids, and you know, and they do well, I would say bring them back next year and do the same.
So I had a couple asked about wanting to be a student teacher, and you know, they're from New York Valley, WE Go, they're from Endicott, I'd say there was one that we hired that he was not an elementary education major, and after watching him work with children this summer, I was like, you really should probably be working with children, because he just did a great job.
So we had several of our alumni come back and do this, how do you advertise in general, in order to draw the talent?
It's kind of, you know, just what Dr. Green was saying, we're kind of be building in this little bit of a homegrown, you know, come back to the area, get these opportunities, these were in education, we, we have kids, like we said, you can see up there, the building trades, some of the things the kids are doing around campus, just.
So did you have a relationship with the college, local colleges, and that's how you advertised?
No, we just advertised through our social media outlets, and then we had people apply to frontline.
Okay.
However, we were just at a leadership conference for BOSIS, and Mr. Schofield, myself, Mr. Marcos, we all sat in a conference about starting to build that pathway with student teachers, and so this is an avenue, we simply have to go a step further, now we have them coming and working summer of us, leading into their student teaching experience, if we make this connection now with the court, once it goes the L virus, now all of a sudden we have a pathway for them to come back and be student teachers with our staff, we talked about, you know, getting them in during like the observation hours they have to do, so if they come back to us now, they have observation, they're starting to learn what WE goes about, and it's simple, it's like, I want to come work, so it's all piecing together nicely, and enrichment is part of that.
As you made arguments, do you know how many interns do you have this year?
We had, for me, elementary, I want to say it was about twenty-five, I think we started with twenty-nine, but some people got some other opportunities that they ended up pursuing. IT, I think had four, exercise science had nine. And then we had three or four for music, and they are music educators, so they got to experience getting lessons and being a part of that, building trades, I think had two or three working with them.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, it was a great summer.
So you have a question, so are we planting the seeds with guidance, their senior year and saying if you're going to education?
That's, that's where, that's where this conversation is going to start, yeah.
Right, yeah, because once they grow, they're.
And the whole track that I just jumped to about the leadership thing, like that's just, we just worked that a couple weeks ago, so now that's where we all said, and whoa, this all ties together, really does, absolutely, including guidance into that and getting kids on track.
During the year, we have a number of kids that have gone to the elementary schools that are participating and work in the classrooms.
Yeah, there was pretty few that.
Some of those, I think, that have a little bit more interest at the moment than maybe some of the others, but it's good to hear you've got some who did an experience, that have a positive experience to think, that is what I want to do.
Yeah, that's great. Any questions, other than what we've asked?
Just to break over, how many schools do you own?
No, we probably have the best elementary program in the area, I don't know a lot, right? But just knowing people that are working on their district, so I think we have the most robust.
I get asked quite a bit about just the layout of the county, so.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
There's another panel, it's another.
Yeah, great, great.
And so thanks to, again, to Ryan. And so thanks again to Ryan, Chris, Schmitz, a lot of work that goes into that. And as you know, again, part of, I think, the summer program pieces has continued to grow. You know, one of our goals obviously is to try to keep kids connected to their school and the community. And I think that allows us to do that. The other piece obviously is our after-school enrichment program where we have upwards of two hundred kids in each elementary building that attend. Keeping them connected to the school and involved and being able to offer, you know, different things outside the regular school day for them to encounter. So thanks again, I know it's a ton of work and appreciate everything that you guys did and all the staff, incredible amount of staff that put in time over the summer. And, you know, come and work with our kids. And we will definitely get the building trades kids in and the groups of other kids who actually aren't even in building trades. That work throughout the district this summer. You can see some of those projects when we, on September eleventh, which I'll talk about, you'll see some things in the lobby. They did some painting and updating and sanding and staining of rounds and extended a stage in the LGI. They, you know, they finished up the back part of the storage on the stadium bleachers. So there's just tremendous amount of stuff going on. And I think it's some real good life lesson learning that takes place for a lot of those kids. So we'll definitely have a presentation on that as well. All right, so we have Mrs. Castro, who's going to talk about Canvas.
So hello, everybody. So I'm really excited to kind of talk to you guys about our new learning management system. One of the things I wanted to kind of share is what is a learning management system? It's really just like a digital classroom where teachers, how is their content? They can use it for assessment, they can use it to maybe even provide intervention, a pathway for them to, for kids who are struggling to get access to some things. While they're working in their classes with other kids, you can put digital art, you know, just all sorts of digital things for kids to access. This is actually replacing what we were used to use, which is Schoology. So we've used Schoology now for ten years, I was thinking about that on the way here. And started that like eleven years ago. And in that eleven years, that particular platform has made zero change and update to it. So we started, as we started diving into the work that we're doing here in the district, we just realized that maybe it's time for change. And something that will complement some of the things that we're doing and it's not so. Did some research and this is where we landed. So going back into the beginning and one of, doing instructional things to sort of determine that maybe we need to make a change. But then we started thinking about all the thought exchange feedback and all the different issues that families and students have been bringing up over the years. About some challenges. So I just want to present some of the challenges to you that we've kind of seen and teachers have experienced. And the challenge of Schoology as we work for, work towards what were our goals. So the first one is student agency and self-efficacy. One of the things that we find with our students is they were having trouble figuring out in high school. And there's school tools where they could go find some of their schoolwork and they could find it in Schoology. And what we found was that students were not sure where to go, what was real to them? What was their world work, real work that they needed to do in order to be successful in that class? And it became difficult for them to track their work. How are they doing, how are they progressing when it's in two different locations? And so that was one of our first things, how can we get kids more, you know, in charge? And use this platform to help build that self-efficacy, that belief that you can. When we make some barriers for them with looking into the locations for their work. The second challenge was this one. This was for families. So students having a hard time keeping track, and I'm specifically speaking towards sixth through twelve. Because that's when that those students really start to, you know, really play that part of trying to navigate and figure out what they need to do. And what's being asked of them in terms of grades and work. So the second one was more or less the, we were asking families to potentially. Four different platforms in order to figure out how their kids were doing. And that caused frustration. So if you are a family of two, you have two kids or maybe even three, and there are different levels. You may, as a parent, be saying, well, where do I go? Do they have this teacher today, do this, do that? I have to log into this one, I have to make an account for that. And so it became very frustrating. And especially when I started asking people, that was one of the things, they look at me and they're like, I just trust my kids that they're doing what they need to do. And that's not always the best thing. And so really starting to think about how can we consolidate and get everything into one place and have that consistency that we've been missing. So that led us to looking at a new LMS. And the last one is, we've really been working on trying to, in our professional learning community, we ask the teachers to really dive into what's most essential. What are the things that we want our kids to be able to know and be able to do? And being able to track that and be able to see how they're working towards that. Schoology could do a little bit, but it wasn't as robust as this is going to be for us. And so as we start working towards, really starting to personalize that experience for our students. Where we can start to maybe involve their personal, you know, their interests and what their strengths are. And to this particular platform will allow teachers to be able to do that, to start to do that. And the last one was the biggest challenge is putting our data into one location. So we can actually start seeing how our students are doing, what resources need to go where. And right now, when they're in multiple different locations, it's hard to then put them all together, routine makes sense of how our students are doing. In the elementary school, I presented to you guys, Stacy and Perry and I have been working on the data dashboard. And that was our attempt at the elementary level, trying to get it into one place to start having conversations. And really being able to be asked, how are our students doing in our reading and writing? We now have very quick answers, we can answer that. And be able to then see the need for our intervention team that we're working on. And being able to then see all of those different needs that we have and start putting those resources in there. It's, we need to get that to that point with our sixth and twelfth, sixth and twelfth. And so being able to see that and everyone be able to have access to that. So those are our three big challenges that we are working on.
Ask you a question.
Yeah.
So you said that between teacher and teacher, that being able to see that as far as being, let's say, you know.
Collaborating.
Collaborate.
Absolutely, yes. Yep, so teachers will still be able to share their work with each other. But what's really great is Google powers this LMS. And so now all the teachers, they live in their Google Drive and they keep all of their work. It's so much easier to put that up and do that. And be able to keep their sharing in the Google Drive or share within the platform themselves. And that goes for quizzes and any assessments that they put up there. I mean, anything that they do, they can share with each other a lot easier than in Schoology. They literally just type in the course and the name and anything. There's a lot to learn, we're, it's very new to everybody. And I understand people are, you know, apprehensive and a little nervous for the start of the year. But I know they can do it because they, they had Schoology down. It's the same thing, just a little tweaking of vocabulary. So, but yeah, absolutely, the sharing is, is the most. And so just overall, I wanted to share, this is what I'm sharing with the two orientations. You know, we're not at the point where we can consolidate all of what I would love to do, but have it in one location. But we still will have rooms for parent, teacher conversations. Canvas, parents will be able to be an observer and they'll be able to see. But what's nice is they'll be able to see everything. They won't necessarily, well, they'll be observed to their students' account. But they'll be able to see sixth or twelfth. So if you have a middle school and a high school student, they'll be able to see what they're doing and not worry about, do I have to go to school tool for this teacher? Or do I have to go to, you know, Schoology for this teacher? Be able to find it in one location. But I do have to say, we still have to have our student information system, which is our school tool. Which is what I've been reading about, it's more of like a filing cabinet for student information. We need that for reporting purposes and report cards and things like that. But, and, but I would love to get to the point and find something that can do all of that. We're just not there yet. But what we were able to do is within the school district's website, you're all there. So rooms, if they have the website, or sorry, the app. If you have the district app, you'll have rooms in there. And then on the other side is more, and then you'll be able to go to parent resources and parents and families will be able to go to.
I heard one question, curious question, only because we've had the app for a number of years.
Yeah.
How engage our parents with the app? How focused?
I wish I didn't imagine that.
How can we grab that data?
I really don't.
So the two-way communication in terms of rooms is the participation is very high at the elementary schools.
Okay.
Not as much at the middle and high school.
Okay.
Which isn't, which isn't uncommon in terms of trend. But we're trying to get to the point where it becomes what we use to communicate, whether you're a coach or a club advisor. Where parents know that I'm not getting something from her mind, class dojo, this, that, and the other thing. And you've got three, four kids and now the stuff's coming. And that's where we run into, I think, to communication issues with folks where they get overwhelmed with the number, number of tools that we're using. So hopefully we can start to continue to tighten the streamline.
All our new folks that have been to the area, they're introduced to the app, number one, I would think, as a family. And then they get some kind of education on how to utilize the app.
Yes.
Moving forward.
But we can give you all the numbers too, if you'd like, of the district app itself and the percentages of users and.
I'd be interested in the data. I don't know how best to board, I'd interest to see where we are from versus where we were.
Yep.
Because I know it was very slow moving.
And I know at the orientations, parents were there, you know, it was. I really would love to be able to have helped and supported them getting into their accounts and stuff. But you needed a student code. So that means the students had to be in the courses. And at the first orientation, it wasn't necessarily the case. On opening in the sixth grade, that will be the case. So they can actually leave their, having an account and being there and being able to see it. And then they, so what's nice about Canvas is you don't have to wait for teachers to provide you a code. Student, your student can give you the code to be the observer in that account. So then it's like, you can be at home and not have to worry about. Maybe contact the teacher about, ask my needs. So being able to do that.
Are there other school districts in the area utilizing Canvas?
No, we, our fourth is the only other district that I know of.
Fourth?
Fourth, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Let's talk a little bit about.
No.
Let's talk a little bit about the process of how you got to.
Oh yeah, so, just being the director of IT, you know, and then hearing whatever, what we're trying to do with our essentials. And be able to track them and be able to create assessments for us to be able to track those over time. And then just all these other pieces, I quickly found that like, I think we had some hurdles. And one of them was this learning management. And plus we have our three through eight state testing. So you have, you know, the elementary, it was very new to them. They were very, they wanted to have the ability to teach their students and be able to expose them to some of the, taking an online assessment. So it's much different than writing a paper. And so having those experiences and yes, that was in school, in Schoology. But just the personal, just the personalization and being able to track and really have the data for all of us as teacher leaders, building leaders, and district leaders. And so I started to demo with all these different learning management systems. And I was absolutely blown away with all the things that they did. So then I had my exam day grading, like this is, you know, just all these other things. And so we landed here because we are down to Brightspace, which is, if any of your kids are in college. That seems to be the SUNY learning management choice. But when you look at their assessment part, it was very similar to Schoology in terms of giving them the online tools, like eliminating the choice. And, you know, for that online testing piece. And so keeping all of what teachers were wanting to do. And then the other part is the elementary teachers were frustrated with having to take, teach young students how to take something out of Schoology and put it in notability and then remember to put it back over here. Lots of steps. And so, and when they started to do these, I was going to be seeing all this, I was like, oh my gosh, those teachers, I don't have to worry about them anymore. And so it was just a lot of those little things that you heard around that you're like, students to be direct with.
How are you making sure that all of our staff members are comfortable with this program?
So we did some, a little bit of, I did an introductory at the end of the school year. And during the summertime, we had five different sessions that teachers could come to. They could come to one, they could come to all. And some of them have come to all and they're like, so it's, they're really, really being helpful and making other teachers say, it's okay, you know, whatever. And then we have training for the first two days. So we broke it up into elementary, middle, and high school. So they each will have their own training. And then from there, just work with principals to see what people's struggles are and need assistance with in the media. And then long-term providing that professional learning, either during, during professional learning time. At the, during either the morning or the afternoon, depending on the building, maybe highlighting some things there or having after-school presentations.
What about the children themselves? What about the children themselves?
So I, there, so the first couple of days of school, I think that we'll have the app ready for the iPads. And then just have teachers just kind of show, this is what we're doing. And I think each teacher's going to be a little different, so that's kind of where I'm at with that. And but if teachers need to come in and help them teach anything with their students, I would more like to. I don't think the students, it's going to be quite easy for them to access this information way better than Schoology. And I think people are thinking about Schoology and how difficult it was. And they don't realize that the student, what the student is getting is going to be so much easier than to get to than they were before. So yeah. And I think each teacher will be using it a little differently, so they'll highlight it a little differently in each class. And if they don't want to use it for the first couple of weeks of school and just want to get to know the kids, and that's totally fine too, you know. It's, it'll be there when it's, you know, when they're able.
It's really, I know, you've done workshops. Do you have, got any early feedback from teachers so far?
Oh, I think the vocabulary from, this is what it was in Schoology, what is it over here? So I've been trying to work on creating a document that says, okay, outcomes over here, the status over here, and assessments and, or sort of modules or folders. And so just kind of getting the lingo, I think they're a little just, you know. And that's the tough part is getting that and working on that.
Could that be through guidance, uh, software or in the ass? With her canvas and give information from that, you know, so.
For, what do you mean for?
I don't know. You know, bangs us.
Connected to it?
Yeah.
Does it talk to it, I forget somebody's question?
Do they talk to school tool?
No, no, to the canvas.
Like, so if I had to follow up, I don't know.
Oh, I haven't, I'm not sure, yeah. I don't know about that side of it.
Okay, so it would be great if that's just another piece that you did. If you want to say, how do you, how do you, you're trying to apply and what, that'd be.
Yeah, I do know that I wanted to put guidance and be able, in terms of guidance having a court book. Where maybe we could look into, this is how they submit their scholarships and things like that. So it's in one location and they'll be able to kind of see where kids are at. And maybe do one for each, great class level. So I was going to talk to them to see how they can, how we can utilize that and keep everything in one location for people. Especially, I mean, I'm thinking about seniors, it's hard enough, done through it three times. And so it's difficult. And anything that you can do to make that a little bit easier. And then I can, I remember saying, my daughter's going to worry about for some reason, but my two sons, I was like, hey, what about those scouts? And, and just being able to be that supportive here and be like, here you go, you know. That would be really nice for families to have that observer part and be able to see all of those things.
So we've talked a little bit about that, fast, you know, having a force on that introductory, how they can go through that process. Other piece you talked about, I think Ryan brought up, was just around the whole, the idea of a student athlete and what, if they're interested in participating at the next level. What's that look like? What are the requirements they're going to need? How should they, how should they go about maybe the whole recruiting process? All these different pieces, I think, that can be helpful for them to better understand what, you know, what it kind of looks like to get there.
I think also, even if Canvas can't communicate, if there's a word, that's the initial click. Even family ID, let's say, let's say family ID can't communicate with Canvas. But if it's the first click that gets you to a place where there's a suite of.
That is my end goal. And I mean, like I would let, you know, so how can I manipulate that for these other pieces? I think you could do it.
Like a dashboard?
Yeah.
The stretch of Canvas.
Yep. And it would be nice for, you know, a student athlete anyway, to be able to go on Canvas and see. Yep. And it would be nice for, you know, a student have that anyway, to be able to go on Canvas and see what it is that they are looking for and be able to get that information. And that's the student agency and efficacy that I was talking about. This, that's really where we want our kids to be able to do, be able to be a part of that. And when we make it difficult and have to look into all these different areas and know who to ask and then having pressure from different people, it can get really overwhelming for them. But so trying to take all of that and share that and be able to put anyone here would be really, really great.
Is there, uh, estimate a timeline as far as, is there now, if you see, you're just, you're just replacing schoology? So the number of apps is totally the same, this exact juncture, right? What does, is there a timeline?
Well, there's not, it's down to one versus we have school, we have, we have some elementary teachers doing Google classroom. We had teacheries, we had schoology and school tool. And so that's where parents could act. Well, the schools, the classroom, you couldn't actually, I don't think there was a parent view on there. But at least with the middle school, sixth through 12, it was in three locations. And if you had a sixth grade and eighth grade and a 10th grader, you could easily get really frustrated with just trying to figure out how to, see how your kids are doing. So now we're down to just one go here for higher students doing, seeing their grades, seeing if they turn it in. I mean, a lot of the conversation, like letting kids that maybe here over the years of, of, um, I turned it in and no, you didn't. Over here it doesn't say. Keeping things to be true and real versus, well, in schoology, my grade said this. In school, in school tool, my grade said this. There was a lot of that, that added to the frustration for families, so.
Is there any sort of, because there were a lot of apps and the way teach, I'm sure teachers use each of them differently. Is there any data transfers available for all that, the data that was in there, the grading, the papers? I know with schoology, things are stored in there.
Yeah. So in, for schoology, their stuff is still in there, if you will. Um, but in some of the other places where they're keeping track of it, most of, um, the bigger, um, platforms that teachers use, IXL. So it talks with school tools, so every new year they get, um, and that's the other part we're trying to do is help teachers with some, some of the platforms that they use for, um, I think it's like Brain Pop and, um, IXL and I forget some of the others that we try to roster through clever. So then it's just a brand new thing. There's stuff stays, but the student data may not stay. So in Canvas, it would, it gets archived and would be able to be there.
Yep. Schoology, you said you mentioned it's still there. Are you keeping schoology or?
No, it's just for parent, or sorry, for teachers to be able to get their stuff transferred over and just make sure that when they're ready, they can, you know, they, I still want them to have access to it so they can shoot, I forgot, and they can go over and get it.
If they're using Google, it's streamlined.
And Google is, yeah, yeah.
Big ones.
So the, um, with the, with Canvas, um, the different active rooms, I was one of those, I was one of those parents where there's so many different apps, I actually just stopped checking. I just, I assume teachers will contact me because it's a big problem. But, um, does Canvas have the ability, maybe modules or in development to take over what school tool does and also what rooms does?
Not at this moment, but that doesn't mean that it can't, like, we still need the, 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 the school, or sorry, the school tool for state reporting and doing a lot of that work.
Right. Um, I just didn't know if Canvas had that in development, but it was like something coming.
If I will always ask, cause it was hard to be, um, that situation, but, um.
Do students use school tool? Because I know today is a big hubbub. They had to get on school tool.
Well, that's, I heard that too, my, my, my.
Maybe their schedules.
So I was like, I don't know, I don't know. I didn't know that you should access it that way. So, um, they still will, I mean, there's still parent portal, there's still that for school tool. They still will be able to see that information over there.
What is the?
But they're not going to see their grades over. It's just one report card. Um, if you want to see it, you'll get one mailed home, but like if you want to see it, you can still see it in there. It's all of their demographics, all of the, thanks for state reporting, regions, exams, attendance and like those kinds of things. So a parent and a student may not need to go there as much as they would be just in Canvas.
The whole thing.
And for their, for sixth through 12 grades. So then they may see how they're doing, progressing in there. And the, the, what Canvas is, is it's communication between student and teacher. The rooms is for parent, teacher, because it doesn't have the ability to bring them, where your parent in there. But you'll observe her and you should be able to see all of that communication for yourself. So you have that over there if you want to see this.
Any other questions?
Yes. It'll be here to support everybody. It changes, very challenging, but I, I know it'll work out.
That's true.
Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, just quickly, I want to recognize Zach McCall. Zach, it's yours tonight. Our new fifth grade teacher. Oh yeah, so beginning of the year.
Oh, wow.
Took time out of his day to come here. So thought we'd recognize him for, for coming. Thanks for being here, Zach. Just wanted to quickly bring up, so we had another meeting with Maine Edwell with discussion around Marathon Health, which at the last board meeting, a presentation from them. I think we're at the point where we'd like to talk about having some type of a joint, um, meeting with their school board and leaders and our leaders as well, the board, probably a Zoom meeting. So be on the lookout for some dates to do that where we can just talk through and then there could be more questions asked. And like here's some questions that, from people from the other board as well. Uh, so we've been working through a lot of those details. I've also had discussions with Dr. Rebecca Stone from, um, from OC. So she is looking into the co-serv piece for us. So she's kind of, I think, to see, uh, to see if any, there's a possibility that it becomes a shared service, which we would then receive aid on, uh, portions of, of the expenses. So, um, just be on the lookout for that. I think that'll be next steps in, in discussion. But we had some, another great meeting. I think that there are some really good ideas that continue to be shared and, um, you know, we're just keeping the lights and communication up at this point, so. Just quickly, so next week, right, we're, we're here already. It seems like summer's the bulk of it, I, and more. And, um, you know, we've got super tense conference day the third and the fourth. So we have things planned there. Um, opening day, obviously everybody is welcome, uh, to join us. We're going to serve at eight o'clock, correct? And opening day.
Yes.
Eight o'clock, yes. Um, so we typically will have coffee and snacks and things like that. And then we'll, we'll kick off the morning and then, uh, staff will, will really head to their buildings at that point. Participating sort of trainings, facilitating these things, get their rooms ready, things of that nature. So those two days will be kind of, uh, a full, a full of that development. And then our first day is, um, September 5th. So you're going to come, right? They're, I think they're going to be back here in no time. Uh, I wanted to bring the budget development. So I know this has been a conversation that we've had before. Let's come up with the Ford. So talk to Bob a little bit about what that might look like in terms of just talking folks through the budget and the process. And, um, so if you have ideas, certainly reach out and, and share those with us. But, um, we, we can get through kind of a full development process and, and digging into the budget to, to help folks become a little bit more acclimated with what that process looks like. So, um, when we start that, I guess is the real question. I mean, we'll start, you know, we're going to be in the thick of, of budgeting already for, starting for the following year. Um, you know, and then typically, I was saying, January, we start to roll that out. But we could do that budget process development much sooner. So you can have a better understanding, I think, before we get to January and start to roll out what the budget will look like for the following year. Uh, we do have a new mandated reporter training for all, um, thanks to New York State. So once again, we will be, all staff will have to update their mandated training, um, and that I believe is by April 30th.
April 30th, 25th.
30th of 25th. So we have some time, but it is a, it is a lift. It's a two-hour training, I believe, that each staff member's going to have to participate in. Even if you have the old mandated for training, everybody's required to, to do this.
Is this something that's going to be available to staff online?
Yeah. Yep. Uh, retreat date, I think we, you know, we've talked a little bit about having a board retreat. But I'd just like some feedback on maybe some dates or time of year that's best for, for everybody. If we want to shoot for September or calendars are already filled for September. Um, I know we, we locked in on September 11th. I believe we had only one person that couldn't attend, uh, for the strategic planning session piece. But I just need a little feedback on what's going to work best. And I'm going to have Marcy pull a few, or Sean pull you, um, if you want to do it on the weekend or weekday, uh, you know, some ideas about that. So just be thinking about it. We don't need any answers tonight, but, um, I think that Joe would talk about it, you know, being able to, you know, retreat with the board would be great.
I, I think it would be important. I think it'd be great. I know everyone's calendar is full. But I think, um, a commitment to some time, um, outside of this room together to kind of understand each other and kind of work as a team and kind of come together and, uh, kind of get off to, even though it's a few months into it, get off to a good start. I think it's important to do it. I would, I would say, uh, eight, end of September, we can get together, um, to get away for a day. So if you can send out one of those surveys.
I think most of the places are within like an hour.
Yeah.
The weekend lists, I guess a few different places and, and get feedback on the rest of the board.
Like a weekday, both weekends, see what they want to do. And then, uh, but yeah, we want to talk about that budget piece.
Yes.
And really get feedback from everybody else. There was a discussion about a pretty in-depth line-by-line, as it was quoted from Bob. That if anyone wanted to kind of do a line-by-line budget assessment, uh, he said that they did that 15, 15, 20 years ago. Maybe I can't remember what he said exactly at the time, but I, I would like to do that. I don't want to take his time and be the only person that takes up his time to go through it line-by-line. And I guess, you know, you would want to know and I would like to know, is there anybody else who would want to do that depth of a dive into the, to the budget?
I would.
Yeah. Okay. So I think it's, uh, a minimum of three is what we need. So we have three. So we'll do that. We'll save a little time with the, uh.
Yep.
Could be a Zoom, could be in person. Uh, I think that'll be very good for me, uh, to do that. Um, so.
Yeah, that's, um, we're, everybody's standing away. We're ready to go for, for the opening. It's going to be here before we.
Yeah. So I didn't, one other question.
Okay.
Goal period was more kind of the day, you know that?
At the secondary level.
Yeah, okay. What, what was the, the orders I'm asking because of course my daughter, she was wrong when I saw it. They have things in the afternoon, you know, and you miss some of the classes. I'm concerned about that. I'm just curious about the.
Well, there's a, there's a little bit of the shift, which I, I believe we shifted a little bit earlier with Tony. So that we did kids into the high school, middle school a little bit earlier. So there's advantages, I think, from the standpoint of not all kids are going to need to be assigned to goal period. So if you're a student who's, who's not in need of goal period, you might come just a little bit later to start your, your regular day. But it's going to give them some flexibility, I think, where we were losing a lot of kids at the end of the day that were off to an athletic event or here, there and everywhere that will give them better access to more kids in the morning.
So is it zero period optional?
It's not necessarily optional, but they're, they're going to kind of hone it in on, on, on students that really need the goal period. What becomes challenging is when, you know, you've got a large number of kids who maybe don't need it and know where, where are they going? And if they can come in, starting first period as opposed to a little bit earlier for the, for the goal. But I think it's got to allow smaller groups for, for staff to intervene with. Um, so that hopefully we'll give it a shot and see if it improves.
So you're, you're providing more opportunity for students to need the goal period and things. So I could tell her to stop.
Yeah, and they'll still be, they'll still be flexible, I believe, at the, at the end of the day as well. But I think also it's going to help us a little bit from the after-school piece with getting to events, you know, just getting out the door a little bit earlier at the end of the day. Uh, we've got to travel to different places for sporting events or other things, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Good, good. New business, uh, Michael, you too, we're going to talk about some of the policies that were reviewed by the policy committee. A couple of those, you have, uh, can you give them on?
Do you want to do the percentage in person? Do you want your policy? 10.1.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. So what are the taxes?
10.1.
For first reading, um, 10.1 first reading, policy 1925, your motion.
No. 10.1. 10.1. It's due, yeah, interim. Do you print it all with?
I don't know, yeah, 10.1.
Okay, so then it was our psychologist contract.
Oh, okay. Yeah, definitely. Right. So you can do that though. So that, mine is 10.2 on that. So we give you the 10.1. That's all right. Sorry. Sometimes I feel like I'm losing my mind. Sometimes I am. But I don't think they did this. 10.2 interim psychologist contract, uh, in a motion.
Some of them.
Second. Discussion. I always did that.
He's been in the, he's done in different places. He's done, he's done some work with us here.
He was here retired, he said he went to Harvard.
Yeah, he retired, he retired probably seven years ago, maybe six years ago, some of the ones.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nora.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Yes, now I can bring up policies.
Now, there's other policies. I'm not going to say the number. I'm just going to say the policy number, 1925.
So 1925 was interpreters for the hearing impaired students. And, uh, there wasn't any change in the wording from my previous policy at, at NISBA's recommendation. So we're recommending, we keep it without any changes. That's what that was.
Yeah.
Policy 5550 regarding student privacy. Again, there's no change in the wording from what was recommended is what we have.
You don't notice on all these, it will tell you it's a required, it's a local, it's a notice. So this, this first batch is all, and I think Mike said that earlier, these are all ones that, um, are required in this read.
All policies? What is first read and what is not?
Generally, we do a first read, so everybody can look at it. Um, and then the second, the next meeting will adopt them.
He's going to ask questions about.
Yeah, anybody has questions.
As you call to the first.
All weekend?
Sure, sure.
Yes. Cause I was looking at, at where it says inspection of construction material. Does that change or is that always where it is? It's on, um.
The wording is the same regarding our last policy and NISBA's recommended policy. There was no changes to the wording. So what was recommended by NISBA as well currently have, as far as what means, that's a different question.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, just, I was looking at the note there that, um, parents are already provided reading with access to like teach, how does that work?
In terms of, I, I guess I could use.
Like a parent, like, like just like this, you know, so as a parent contact.
They can request, yeah, yeah.
To see a curriculum or.
Yep, yeah, they can request.
Questions, see what required reading it is and everything.
Yep. You can do that.
I think if there's any other questions, add them between now and then, fire out the questions.
Sure.
Just at the next board meeting.
Yep.
And then that's the second read. And at that point, we would adopt the policy. And then, uh, policy 841425 is new drug and alcohol testing of drivers. And that is completely new because that represents all kinds of changes in state and federal mandates and laws, particularly the federal clearinghouse. So that's a completely new policy.
You speak up, it's really hard to hear you.
Yes, this is a brand new policy. Um, it replaces the one that we currently had because of changes to state and federal regulations. Most importantly is the federal clearinghouse.
Do you know, Mr. App, all the exhibits are, even there, also the consents and things like that that go along with the policy itself?
So our recommendation is to adopt NISBA's policies. So, yeah.
Uh, public comments, we have attendance, we have no one interested in any... Last chance. Action item summary, twelve point one, uh, legal services. Question? What are we talking about?
Okay.
This discussion, um, I can, did I get sample? Did I, did I...
Again, I printed it out.
So, from CBO, I received sample policy, sample RFPs, so I can send them in an email out, um, under the different categories, based on the way they had, so.
So we discussed this last time, we were going to put out RFPs for legal services. So we have a couple samples that we will...
Yeah. I will email those, so I'll just leave the item out for next meeting.
Survey follow-up, we had, uh...
You know, I think, uh, we talked last time about if we're going to do RFPs, then it makes good sense to do RFPs for really four major services that, that are provided us, state comptroller recommends that we do occasionally, through the buyers. Um, four are legal services, auditor, construction manager and architect. And, uh, I went on the board docs to look, and I couldn't find, well, I found it in two thousand seventeen, you know, last time we did the RFPs for construction manager or...
It would have been probably seventeen, eighteen, maybe, for architect, for construction manager, or...
One, I found this two thousand seventeen, yeah.
Would have been around, uh, a little bit.
So I, I think it would be good practice, uh, so I, I personally think that legal services and auditors should be, we should do an RFP, basically it's a request for proposal to find out what's out there. We don't like that, not it, but I think that would be good practice. We're in a unique situation now in that we are in the middle of a capital project that hasn't been finished yet, and we're just starting one that hasn't been, um, so with SED yet, so that's an interesting one. Since May, the, the architects are very much involved in the SED design and so forth, in consultation with construction managers, so I mean, they're a good resource in terms of costs and that sort of thing. Um, and in my mind, I think that it would be important not to conflate the old project with the new project. So in my mind, um, it wouldn't make sense to do the architectural RFP because they're busy doing what they need to do to get the documents submitted to SED, not get us by. Currently, I believe our construction manager is already being paid to provide, to consult, I guess, the process, very good assets. So I don't think it would be as big a disruption with the construction manager, and I think that, uh, I think that is doable. So a way I foresee it would be if we did the RFP for the construction manager, they're going to continue doing what they're doing anyways, right up to the day that the award is, or that is awarded, uh, without any change in, and I think, uh, construction manager's been here a long time, so, um, very intimate and very familiar with our district, and probably would be favorable then on our part. Uh, so in the event they got it, nothing changes. In the event they didn't get it and the board awarded the contract to another construction manager, then there'd be some discussion as to how it all worked. So those are just my thoughts.
Never read the answer.
I would say that, you know, the legal services and auditors, we can talk about that again, if we're going to, uh, think about an RFP for the construction manager, that probably should be done sooner than later. Um, really, we need to make sure that we have a construction manager on board at the time that the tracks are, are, and we're going to pull off on the, um, the, and I do think it's important to have the architecture RFP done sometime, but this is not the time, so I think after this project would be the time to do that.
I would tend to agree. I always thought RFPs were required for, like, states that you had to with education, so I think it's good practice, it keeps everybody in check. I would be in favor of new projects, uh, in construction for an RFP.
Okay, do we have samples?
You have samples, so I'll leave out samples out.
For all, or just for the, for...
Oh, okay. CBO has something on the head, I'll be there for each, so.
Any other discussion? Twelve point two, we had a, uh, discussion, Nora brought up about the survey follow-up and after investing a lot of time in H E in that, maybe we would dive a little deeper, so during our, uh, agenda meeting, we discussed possibly creating a subcommittee, we don't want to make too many subcommittees, um, but we thought maybe the H R committee, which I think is a little bit of Nora, anyone else in here, also, we know Nora, just there, we can also...
Yeah, just us two.
I think it was just us two.
Um, that way it covers everyone, uh, not just teachers, employees, um, I know you get a lot on your plate, you go through, you get a lot on your plate, is that something that you could dig into a little?
Well, it depends what your objective is for follow-up, because we just, I mean, I got a pretty thorough, you know, all the findings that were shared with us at our last meeting, so it depends on what the, I think that would be a great discussion with our board retreat, is what would be the objective for the follow-up, and what kinds of initiate, initiatives could we pass on to Cory to, you know, go forward?
Yeah, absolutely.
So...
I, I don't want to, want to snag, I want to know if you two would be interested.
Oh, absolutely, I, I mean, it was a huge task for us to take on, huge task for the I T department to make it happen, and we got a lot of great feedback as well, things we need to improve on, so, yes, I'd be interested.
I think, I don't, but, I really only have one goal for that, is to increase the participation.
Absolutely.
I think that's, that's the number one goal, however we can do that, um...
And I know that Jennifer is very interested in supporting us, as the woman that supported us during the whole process, she probably will have some wonderful suggestions on how we can improve participation. So Cory, if that's possible for you to connect with her and see if she can assist us in this capacity?
Yeah. And that, you know, as we were discussing, and it's, I was thinking maybe, Super Ten's Conference is a great time to do stuff like this, since it's, you know, working a little high, and it probably, not just to take away from the students, right, but build the capacity from, uh, teachers, so. I don't think we can turn it around that quickly, but, you know, any other discussion about surveys you'd like? Retreat, we discussed it, uh, a little bit earlier, we may have made that well, had circa people, we have a weekday time, um, developed, maybe discuss survey results stuff and have a plan for that. Anything else? Your motion to adjourn?
Okay. All the bigger?